Good morning and welcome to City Hall. We have received a couple of grants from the federal government, and we have some wonderful We'll get started this morning with our invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor A.T. Hargrave is here from Crestwood Baptist Church. partners here. First of all, Jerry Hyden, the field officer and the director for the Oklahoma City Office He'll lead us in the invocation. Afterwards, I'll ask Councilman Gary Morris to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. at the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development is here. Would everyone please stand? Jerry, you want to bring everybody up here?
Father, I thank you for each person here, and I thank you that they are an expression
And then we'll have a second check, but we'll do that one separately. And I'm going to just hand the microphone over to Jerry, and he can explain it more
of your creativity and a focal point of your love.
clearly than I can.
And your word tells us to celebrate those in authority because they're placed by you.
But, you know, I played a lot of competitive golf and, you know, always dreamed of being
And so we thank you for them, and I pray that you give them wisdom and understanding,
the guy on the green that got to hold up the big check. I never made it in that respect.
vision, Father, that they would bring heaven's order to our city, that your goodness would
But as mayor occasionally, I get to hold up the big check, and this one is a big one.
be distributed to each person, and that, Father, it might be said of Oklahoma City
$500,000 for the city of Oklahoma City. It comes from the U.S. Department of Transportation and the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban
that your will was done here just as it is in heaven.
Development.
And we will continue to celebrate your goodness towards us, and we pray this in Jesus' name.
This grant is actually being used for Plan 180, is that?
Project.
Amen.
Project 180 in Oklahoma City?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic
Plan OKC, all right. For us, for the, we runners in Oklahoma City, the construction is really making us change
for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
our running route, but we're glad to see it. Mayor, I don't know if you know this, but the Brookings Institute released a report late Friday afternoon on the top 10 cities leading the economic recovery in the United States,
all.
and Oklahoma City was on that list. Congratulations to the council and to you, and the great job you're doing here in the city.
We'd like to show our appreciation, I know, to both the Department of Housing and Urban Development and also the Department of Transportation.
Thank you very much.
Do I get to endorse the back of it with a big marker? All right, and let's see. Ivan, you got the other check?
We have the other one. Got the right one.
$378,000. You want to tell us more about this?
Yes. Your, well, your ACOG staff was very successful putting together a grant application this year. You were up against a lot of competition. We had, you know, 700-plus grant applications, and you were successful in getting this one for $378,000 to help with your transit studies here. And I believe it's part of your MAPS program, and I'm glad to see that we're able to help out and to keep the MAPS initiative going. It's a great initiative that, you know, is, I think, nationwide is being used as a model by other cities to be able to utilize, you know, funds to develop and improve your city. So I congratulate your staff for putting together such a great application. Like I say, you were up against very strong competition, and it shows you the great devotion you have for your city and for developing your transit. Congratulations.
I know these grants are very competitive, and so I want to congratulate our staff who was able to tell our story adequately and to return these federal dollars back to Oklahoma City. We will use them wisely, and I know this is specific to transit and transportation in general, but our specific grant was to help in our areas of transit. So thank you for coming in. All right. Thank you all very much. Congratulations to our staff, too. Today, we were already $800,000 up. It's a good deal. We ought to just stop right now, didn't we?
Yeah, give us a minute.
That's right. All right. We're in the black when a meeting begins. We're on to item four of the council agenda. This is the Journal of Council Proceedings. Item 4A is to receive the Journal of Council Proceedings for January 4th, and item 4B is to approve the Journal of Council Proceedings for December 21st. Motion in a second. Any comments or questions about the journal? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. And item five's request for uncontested continuances.
Just Mayor, I have two this morning. Both are on Claims for Denial on page 10. On Claims for Denial, we ask that we defer item 8D1C, Charles Starr, one week, to January 18th. This is at his request due to weather. And then we'd also ask that we strike item 8D1D, Ruby Washington. She has provided more information that we need to review, and we'll bring that back in a couple of weeks, so we'll strike that.
All right, any other requests for uncontested continuances? Then let's recess the council meeting, convene as the Oklahoma City Municipal Facilities Authority. There's one item. Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any comments or questions here on the MFA? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Well, adjourned, O.C., MFA, reconvene the council meeting with the consent docket.
All right, is there any individual consideration?
Your Honor, I have a minor question or two on I, L, pardon me, L, U, and W.
Mayor, Pat and I are thinking alike, and I bet his question on I will answer my question as well. I had G, U1, and Y.
G, U?
G, U1.
Okay.
And then Y.
All right.
I apologize, I'm making it for lost time.
All right. Sam?
Yes.
Emma? Okay. Pat, you want to go ahead and get us started?
Thank you, Your Honor. On L, this is a project we bid at, excuse me, some work, and the engineer's estimate was a little over $5 million, and the bidding bid was $2.7 million, just about a little bit more than 50% of what the engineer's estimate was. And I just, whenever I see that kind of disparity, it sort of is a red flag that if we missed something, are we looking at a lot of change orders to get this thing done at the right price? It seems like there's just a big gap in there.
I don't think anything was missed. I think the engineer was just trying to be safe and make sure he wasn't low.
I understand that, but I just, you know, a safety factor 10% would be more comfortable than 50%, but it's just curiosity, Your Honor.
All right, I know we never had it funded at that level, so.
Yeah. I like to see the extra money coming back when you do more road work.
Yeah, no.
On U, this is U10. This is an agreement for some cost-sharing work at the old Gulfstream Arrow Commander Plant in Bethany. Does the city have any ownership of that property or control of that property? We will. We will.
That property, we'll revert back to the Airport Trust.
Okay.
And so what we're trying to do is work out the remediation with both Gulfstream and Rockwell of the environmental contamination out there. We're trying to get cleaned up so that we can have clear title on that and make that a potential remarketing industrial site.
Good, because it would be a good industrial site, so I'm glad to hear that. On W, this is a resolution about some property. City owns at the old Smickless Chevrolet place. I wondered why the city owned property out there?
It was just a gap in the legal descriptions. When they, when they, there were some things out there, and it was just, it was just a gap that occurred between tracks of land.
Okay, so there was no property purpose for that property acquisition, or just, I mean, property being cities, other than just this sort of.
I think it was just a gap between some right-of-way that was acquired.
Okay, thank you, Your Honor.
Fairly quickly, Pat, I thought I was on your list, and I guess it was on mine only. This is an application to submit a grant to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Phase Three, and I really just wanted to comment what a fabulous job we've done with Program One and Two, and this looks like an opportunity to really even more laser-focus the dollars and that the intent is to really identify a neighborhood in extreme distress and use the full amount of the money. It's authorized under a new Dodd-Frank Wall Street Reform and Consumer Protection Act, but I'm certain that Oklahoma City will be very successful in receiving these funds, given the success we've had with Program One and Two. And Russell, I just want to compliment your staff in recognizing this opportunity.
Thank you. And Matt Gabelson, who's been the primary project manager for this BNSP, has got a small presentation on this, just in terms of illustrating what that target area is, so he can fill you in a little more information on that. It is a competitive grant process for this third round. $5 million is available, minus 3% state keeps for administration, and we've submitted for that entire balance, and we'll see what happens in terms of competition for that. I think we've done a very good job in the past, and hopefully that will be considered as we, in light of this application that we're asking for you to authorize submission of today. So, Matt, you want to go ahead?
Thank you. I'll provide a brief overview, and I'd be happy to elaborate or answer any questions. On the map on the screen, I don't have hard copies. What this is, is the yellow boundary, if it's discernible, is the Cordish Shore redevelopment area, and the red area is our NSP3 target area. NSP3 funds are much more limited than NSP1 and 2 funds. The state has been allocated $5 million, and they're going to reserve about 3% for administrative purposes. The city is going to compete for the available full balance of those funds. I understand that there are many jurisdictions in the state who are also going to compete, so this is going to be a very competitive application. NSP3 is very similar to NSP1 with some specific and important differences. Funds can be used for housing or housing-related activities in very specific geographical target areas, which I'll talk about in just a second. The funds have to have a preference for rental housing development, which is different from NSP1 funds. NSP1, our focus is on single-family acquisition and redevelopment. There has to be a clear tie with NSP3 funds to NSP1 funds. Our tie is in terms of overlapping geography. The expenditure requirements are much more stringent than in the past. We have to use these funds timely. There are essentially five, only five eligible target areas in the city of Oklahoma City. We have to use the funds in one eligible-use area for a concentrated or focused effect. Of the five, we believe the best opportunity for the use of the funds, the way that they are required to be used, is in the target area here in the red. It's essentially Census Track 1037001, which is just the shape of that Census Track. It fits in perfectly with the Cordish Shore redevelopment area. The NSP3 funds can be used to counter blight and do redevelopment revitalization initiatives on a concentrated level, which is precisely what the Cordish Shore Plan calls for. In fact, back in February, there was a determination of blight for the entire area and a redevelopment urban renewal plan adopted by council in March of 2010. Excuse me. I'm going to try to draw focus to the target area. There's certain features here that are important. We, this plan, or the Cordish Shore Plan, calls for redevelopment of the target area in the next 5, 10, 15 years. There's phases of this activity, some of which are already underway. In the green area you see is the park area. Activities are underway by the city to acquire property, and the demolition of the post, old post office, which is there toward the middle of the green area, is underway. The blue area represents the urban renewal, primary target redevelopment plan for the, within the urban renewal plan. Our focus is going to be to the west of the blue line, north from Rock Island Railroad to California Street. We're going to look at targeted acquisition, demolition of any blighted structures, and redevelopment of a multifamily, mixed-income residential property of the type that's proposed by the plan and what's needed in that western part of that area. I think that's all I have prepared to say, but if there's any questions. We think it's a great opportunity to build on the success of MAPS initiatives. Project 180 is going on just to the north. The type of housing that we're proposing is determined by a recent downtown housing study to be precisely what's needed in there. Rental residents who were surveyed throughout Oklahoma City said that they would move downtown if a type of housing at an affordable price point were available. And these NSP3 funds are not just for the low income. They can serve up to 120% of area median, so we think we have a great opportunity to partner with private investors to do a larger scale. We're proposing a $14 million development, 4.8 is with NSP3 funds. We're going to look for other public and private funds to build the balance out and do a replicable type of housing model that catalyzed development in that area.
Have we done anything like this before?
In terms of multifamily rental housing, not on this scale, no.
Your Honor, this is an excellent example of using some public money as a catalyst for private development. I think this is a great example of what could be done in the short, Cordish Shore area in the future. If we are lucky enough to get the grant and we can go forward as people have planned, it'll be a great project.
Larry?
What I heard you say was that this particular target area was one of five target areas possibly within the city?
Correct.
What were the other four that were not chosen?
This is a map of the five general eligible-use areas. This is determined by HUD and made more restrictive by the state, which leaves us these five. You can see the red boundary, which, I don't have the highways represented, but it's sort of the inner-loop highway system, and the red, that represents our NSP1 target area. The dots represent the NSP1 activities. There are other eligible general areas that are, you know, that cross the boundary, but the target area that we're looking at is sort of right in the center, so it overlaps in its entirety with NSP1, and it has the best opportunity for a multifamily, higher-density, mixed-income residential type of development than any other area that we could identify. We looked very closely at that Lower JFK, which is sort of to the right, a little bit to the right and north, and we had certain possibilities that didn't come to fruition in our estimation in the timeframe we had available to create a fully-formed plan.
So if I thought that there was another area in town that does not show up on this map as purple or lavender, somebody else made the determination, and that was outside of our control as to what area could be used to compete for this grant?
Absolutely correct.
Thank you, sir.
Meg, what was the issues with the Lower JFK area?
Well, there's a lot of housing development in that area, so it's very attractive for our intended purposes. There are very few foreclosed, single-family residential properties which could be converted to rental. So we didn't have that opportunity on the single-family scale. So we were looking for attractive land for a larger-scale type of rental housing development. We considered senior housing, we considered single-family housing, I mean, family housing in multifamily context. The Dunbar school was, school area was sort of a primary target, and we looked into that whether we could acquire it within the timeframes possible, and there were some other sort of federal environmental-related issues. The historical nature of the property made it a little difficult, and I don't think the school system is ready to let that property for the type of, within the timeframe that we're looking at.
Well, I have one other question. So of the applied-for funds, how much of that is earmarked for demolition of properties that's in the identified area that you have previously, that you have selected?
About $2 million, a little over $2 million for the demolition activity. Now, being that this is a very competitive application, we've had to also consider backup planning for, let's say, half. If we were awarded half of the funds, we would have to be prepared to have a plan to utilize those funds, so we do have that in place, sort of as a backup measure if the state comes back and gives us less than our request. We're prepared to use them in the target area that we're proposing for the same purposes with shifting the funds from more toward the acquisition/demolition side and doing a development plan for the build-out with other public or private funds.
It just seems that where there are areas that has a greater potential of real development that has actually started, it would seem like that this would be a better, that would be a better fit to place the fines to create a bigger development as opposed to going to an area that is nothing but a dilapidated area in itself that you're going to have to acquire, you're going to have to purchase, and then you're going to have demolition, you're going to have to go through the demolition process, and I would just be willing to bet you that you've got just as many environmental issues in the area that has been identified for this grant, a lot more than you would at Dunbar. And I would just be, I would also wonder just how much does the school system really embrace the physical structure of Dunbar as it relates to the opportunity to develop that area, because if there's ever an area in Oklahoma City that deserves an infusion of federal funds and these type of programs, it is truly the Lower JFK area.
We agree, and Dunbar is a very attractive site, and we pursued it with some aggressiveness. We just don't think it's going to work within the timeframes that we're required to spend those funds.
Skip, as I'm, and Matt had presented this to the Neighborhood Conservation Committee, and it is, I listened to the presentation and the emphasis on HUD and the selection of an area when we talked about other areas, but the preponderance of vacant and foreclosed properties is really one of the strong determining factors. And as much as I agree with you with respect to need, housing need in the Lower JFK area, to try to make a case for the number of foreclosed vacant properties, it just, when you drive, I took this, I went and asked a small contractor to drive through this area with me. I know the area, but I wasn't familiar with it. I just wanted to do it street by street. And just, I would say in that entire western area, which is the only area west of the blue line, I guess that's Lee, over to Chartel, is the only area of any residential stock. The rest is vacant or commercial to the east. Skip, I'll bet there wasn't one or two at the most houses that would withstand a 30-mile-an-hour wind down there. I don't, we don't know yet the number of foreclosed properties, but there's just an overwhelming number of either foreclosed or just abandoned vacant properties. It looks to be the great majority, and that seems to be what HUD's driving at, and that's what just really persuaded me after hearing from staff, that if we're going to have any chance in this competitive application, we're going for the whole pot. This is, this is this, the round, this, this $5 million is available to the entire state, and we're going for the, you know, the entire full amount of it. And our case is going to have to be strong, and it's going to have to, I think, be driven by this criteria there of high numbers of foreclosed or vacant properties, and that's, that's what I saw in great preponderance down there.
Okay. Meg?
Yeah, just a couple of other quick things, and maybe this is for the councilor. Item 6G is, a city's actually delivering a quick claim deed to a piece of property, but in the memo it says that we, the city authorized the municipal councilor's office to start foreclosure proceedings in November of 2005, and we received our judgment in June of 2009. How could it possibly take that long?
I'll have to check on that.
It just seems an inordinate amount of time. I'm delighted with the outcome. The property owner owns the home, and that's the correct thing. The city didn't want to own it, but it seems like from 2005 to 2009 is an extremely long time to get ahold of that property. Item U1, it just relates to some recent travels that I have been on, and Director Krennberg, I see it's a renewal of the contract with Smart Cart.
Yes, ma'am.
And I couldn't see in my, in my book, financial book, how much revenue we gain from that contract.
I don't believe we state the revenue in the memo. I can check and get back to you on that. It's not very much.
My question, you know, when one travels outside of the U.S., those Smart Carts are free, and it is a huge benefit to the traveling public if you're a person, one person, and you've got two big pieces of luggage, to be able to find a Smart Cart at just about any place and use it and then return it at no cost. And to have to fumble with trying to find change or dollars if you haven't changed money and pay for it, it's just a thought that it might be a little more friendly if it's not a significant revenue operation to look at providing that service for free.
We'll look at that.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing I wanted to mention is just, this is item 6Y, and it's the acceptance by the city from Oklahoma City Beautiful for two benches to be placed in Wiley Post Park, and one of those, I think, is already in sight, already located. It was presented by the Jewish Federation, but the other from Randy Royce, who was such a wonderful supporter of the city and a wonderful supporter of Oklahoma City Beautiful. I just wanted to recognize that contribution. Thank you.
Any other comments on the consent docket? Yes?
Um.
Item U1, it just relates to some recent travels that I have been on. And Director Krennberg, I see it's a renewal of the contract with Smart Cart.
Yes, ma'am.
And I couldn't see in my, in my book, financial book, how much revenue we gain from that contract.
I don't believe we state the revenue in the memo. I can check and get back to you on that. It's not very much.
That's my question, you know, when one travels outside of the U.S., those Smart Carts are free. And it is a huge benefit to the traveling public if you're a person, one person, and you've got two big pieces of luggage, to be able to find a Smart Cart at just about any place and use it and then return it at no cost. And to have to fumble with trying to find change or dollars if you haven't changed money and pay for it, it's just a thought that it might be a little more friendly if it's not a significant revenue operation to look at providing that service for free.
We'll look at that.
Okay, thank you. And the last thing I wanted to mention is just, this is item 6Y, and it's the acceptance by the city from Oklahoma City Beautiful for two benches to be placed in Wiley Post Park. And one of those, I think, is already in sight, already located. It was presented by the Jewish Federation. But the other, from Randy Royce, who was such a wonderful supporter of the city and a wonderful supporter of Oklahoma City Beautiful, I just wanted to recognize that contribution. Thank you.
Any other comments on the consent docket? Yes.
Um, this has to do with the conversion of Oklahoma Avenue, Meg, northwest, northeast 10th Street to northeast 4th stretch that runs parallel to Broadway. Hardly familiar with it because it's been one way all these years and rarely take it. But when we plan to make this conversion, are we using the opportunity to create within the two-way system down to 4th Street, a bike lane so that connects with, connects with our system downtown?
Sam, we are.
We are?
We are. Actually, we've worked extensively with Public Works and it's
One side?
It's going to be on one side of the road, but we will have a bike lane that goes all the way down.
Yeah.
Ready to vote the consent docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to the concurrence docket, eight items. A motion and a second on the concurrence docket. Any comments or questions?
Question?
Yes, Larry.
I'd like somebody to speak to item H. Change order for $527,000. I know, I know what, from hearing publicity on it, what it's intended to do, but I'd like to have someone go on the record as to why we're doing this, and then how we're going to find the funds out of the MAPS money to make sure that we still have enough to complete the MAPS for Kids Project.
This is the old auditorium within Capitol Hill, and when they began demolition and began stripping some of the sheetrock off, they found the old, the old plaster work and some of the very unique architectural features that were underneath it. And some of the MAPS for Kids Trust members and some of the MAPS, no, not MAPS, the school district members viewed that and thought that'd be very important to the community if we could restore as much of that auditorium as possible. So what we're doing is going through and restoring most of the Capitol Hill auditorium back to its, its original features. There's a lot of cast plaster and such. The dollars for this will come out of the contingencies on MAPS for Kids. MAPS for Kids does run in the black at this point in time, and there should be certainly adequate funds to complete all the projects within the MAPS for Kids program. And Eric, if I missed something, you can fill in any gaps.
All right. All right, ready to vote the concurrence docket? All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item eight, these are items that require a separate vote. First is its only case in Ward six. The address is 1633 Northwest Second Street. It's currently R2 medium-low density residential district, and it would become an I1 light industrial district. Meg?
Thank you, Mayor. This was an item that was deferred, I believe, from last week's council meeting. We'd requested an easement, and that had not been submitted. But Bob, I understand the easement has been submitted. This is an area, sort of a transitional area, that very little residential moving to industrial. There were no protests, Bob, that I'm aware of, related to the application, and it was approved by staff, so I would move approval of the item.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We're voting on item eight A. Cast your votes. Passed unanimously.
Does this require emergency? Does this require the emergency? No, okay, thank you very much.
Item eight B is an item to accommodate a pavilion for a vocational school. It's in Ward four. Anyone here wishing to speak on this item? Brian is here to answer questions.
If there aren't any objections, I move approval.
All right, cast your votes on item eight B. Passed unanimously. Item eight C is a revocable right-of-way permit for Martin Luther King Jr. Holiday Coalition to hold the parade, which will be on January 17th through Ward six and seven.
Anybody who wants to speak on that one? Move approval.
All right, cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On to item eight D. These are claims recommended for denial. Is there anyone here wishing to speak under any item listed under eight D? All right, looks like we're good to go. How about a motion? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. Item nine is claims recommended for approval. There's one item. Comments or questions on item nine? Cast your votes. Passed unanimously. On 10 is items from council. Gary, you want to get us started?
Nothing really, Mayor, other than for those of us that are in Senate District 47, there is an election going on today.
Which is roughly north of Lake Hefner and that part of the city area, that state senate seat?
Right. And I think most of it goes up, or a lot of it goes up into Edmond, but
Is this a winner-take-all?
Yes, it is.
It is. So even if a candidate does not get 50%, are there just Republican candidates, or is it
There were no Democrats that filed, so it's all Republicans, and it is a winner-take-all.
Okay, so we'll have a new state senator representing Oklahoma City at the end of the day.
That's correct.
Okay, so we urge people to get out and vote. Thanks for bringing that attention. Sam?
Along this line, just want to tell a little story about getting down in the trenches with your constituents. Mayor and I went to lunch last week after council meeting down at the Peacock, and we were waggling our way down there. And on the sidewalk at the approach to the front door is a full street lane or two dugouts, I don't know, maybe six or seven feet down. As we walked by, three hard hats, hats about sidewalk level, one of them looked up and said, "Nick, are you still with Channel Five?" He said something like, "No, no, it's, it's been a long time." And without even a hesitation, he says, "Oh, that's right, you're the governor." So, you know, it's about a mayor that gets down in the trenches with his people. I wanted to just make a comment about the Peacock. While we had lunch, the manager that was quoted in the paper the next day about the inconvenience caused by our work downtown and the loss of revenue in the last six, nine months certainly has a legitimate case. I don't know what we can do about some of those small, particularly restaurants downtown that are really being impacted. I just wondered, Jim, at a minimum, could we even help with some directional signs, you know, at some, at an intersection or two that just point to the fact that the Lagoon, the Peacock are still alive and well or something, and they're in this direction?
No, we have done some of those. If you take a look at
Well, I saw some with, with City Event Center and
There have been sites, businesses open in this area and such, but we can certainly reevaluate that. If we need to do more, we can do that.
I think it'd be helpful. Larry? You bet.
Well, just, just off of that same comment, there has been considerable construction at, on coming in off the interstate on Walker, and that backs up during rush hour. And I just took it in myself this morning to ask myself the question, is there a way to get downtown that's different than the way I'm used to? And I mapped out another route, and I actually beat the interstate route by about 10 minutes. And my point is that while this inconvenience is going on, if you apply a little creativity, you may be able to get around downtown faster than you really think and get to your destination. And so downtown is not off limits to people. You can still come downtown. You can, Saturday night, there was a Thunder game and a Barons game both going on. There was adequate parking for both of those events going on. I don't know how big a crowd was at the Barons, but the Thunder had a sellout. So there is, is a way to get around downtown if you just apply a little creativity. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, Pete?
We, at long last, had the control burn at Grape River Lake this, this last weekend, and it went very well, very well. We're, I'm sure there'll be a, down soon with wildlife forestry officials that oversaw the burn, we'll be able to give you a full report on really how it worked. But it went extremely well. It was, I was, they're very professional about what they do, and you just kind of stand back and watch them do it, and they really did a good job.
Brian? Meg? Skip?
Yes, I would like to ask that there are reports from time to time that tends to identify strongly areas in various wards. And I was a little surprised to, to see a report this past week in reference to the violence and homicide cases that had been identified in, by certain zip codes in Oklahoma City. And, and one of them happened to be unfortunately in Ward seven. And I'm sure there's some of you who've had some of those ward, those zip codes identified to your ward. But I would really appreciate if, if, if staff has given this information, that sometimes that we, as the council person, could get some type of briefing before it's let out. So at least you would have some knowledge before you start getting bombarded with telephone calls about, you know, you know, your ward is, is a danger zone, or parts of your ward is identified as a danger zone. And, and some of the comments that was made that, you know, I just think that, you know, we as the council should have a little bit more information in reference to some of that information before it's, it's told to everybody else, you know? And I'm not trying to, to conceal anything. I just would appreciate that if the transparency of it was equally given to the council as it is to, to the rest of the world.
Pat?
Thank you, Your Honor. As Councilman Mars pointed out, today is Election Day for a state senate seat in far northwest Oklahoma City. And it seems like there's been a extraordinary proliferation of campaign signs for this particular race. There are five candidates, and I think they spent most of their budget, it appears, either on mailers or, or signs that they've put all over their lives away. And I wonder if we couldn't arrange for some kind of a sign sweep the next several days to clean that up, because it is, like I say, it's been a, as I said, an extraordinary proliferation of signs this time. And I think we need to get them cleaned up as best we can. I've had several calls from constituents complaining about the number of signs out there. If we could get something done with that, I would really appreciate it.
We'd be happy to do that.
Thank you.
Mayor? Yes?
On that sign issue, we had a kind of a tentative agreement, Mr. City Manager, with the fair people at the fairgrounds, that their people that came in on the weekends would not put out those illegal signs. There are a number of those around right now promoting and invented the fairground that are illegally placed. So a sign sweep would definitely, I think, be appropriate.
We'll address that again.
So you manage your reports?
I want to highlight this morning, the West Town development that's going on. Dan Strong, we invited him to come down this morning to give us an update on, on some of the homeless issues and primarily the progress being done with the West Town Resource Center. Dan, thanks for coming.
Thank you so much. Being an advocate
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to begin by just thanking you all for letting me have some of your, the time on your agenda today. It's really always a pleasure for me to, to come and listen to a city council meeting. I get, I get surprised by how, how intricate city planning is for urban development and how those plans and all their, their various moving parts come to a, come to a head right, right here at the horseshoe, and, and things really work. It's such an exciting time right now to be in Oklahoma City in just a host of ways. I had visitors from Boston, Austin, and New York City in, over the holidays, and people who had never been here to Oklahoma City before, some of them. And they were just so impressed with downtown Oklahoma City general and downtown OKC, the events in particular. So it's a, it's a proud time to be in Oklahoma City, and particularly for me, as we, as we make progress on homelessness in our community through broad collaborations. I'm not getting any action on my PowerPoint. Thank you. As you all know, we have some barriers in Oklahoma City to, to effectively addressing homelessness, and I'm not going to lead a PowerPoint presentation to you. Most of you know what those barriers are. It is somewhat of a fragmented system of care, and so we have come together with, with city government and the city planning department, United Way, 80 government, nonprofit, and faith-based agencies working on homelessness to develop a collaborative solution. Next slide, please. And that is the West Town Resources Campus for Homeless Services. There will have a one-stop shop, coordinated case management, a day shelter, and this no-wrong-door approach to homelessness that HUD finds as a best practice. Next slide, please. West Town began, I mean, from the, from the very beginning as a broad collaboration when the Homeless Alliance had a dream of a campus for homeless services. And we went with United Way to the city manager's office and described that dream and asked where that should happen. And literally that day, the city manager, Jim Couch, convened a group of Homeless Alliance, United Way, the Oklahoma City Chamber of Commerce, city planning, and people in the city manager's office to find the best location for this campus in Oklahoma City. And it was West Town at Northwest Third and Virginia. It had two big warehouses and two smaller pole barns on it. And it, that property, that city block is being developed to the West Town campus. Next slide. On the north end, 17,000 square foot resource center that will be that kind of one-stop-shop for homeless services. On the south side, a 15,000 square foot day shelter. And future, room for future development on the east end of the block. So next slide, please. At the resource center, we'll have a host of services. One of the things that we have found with homelessness in Oklahoma City is that it's, it's a symptom of other problems, mental illness, substance abuse, underemployment, unemployment, lack of education, those sorts of things. And especially with families with children, which for a long, a long time has been our fastest growing demographic of the homeless population. It's, it's never just one of those problems. And so bringing together these services under one roof will make the system much more efficient. Next slide, please. So the resource center is configured like a multi-physician doctor's office. There's a big waiting room on the front end with a receptionist and an intake specialist. And then employees from various agencies all around Oklahoma City will have offices there in to provide case management, more importantly, coordinated case management to homeless individuals and families with children. Next slide, please. As I mentioned early on, this is a broad collaboration. So those services, the Homeless Alliance is not providing those services, merely the umbrella under which they can operate. So our employment, training, and placement services will be provided by TEAM, the Education and Employment Ministries. Mental health counseling is provided by North Care, substance abuse work by Red Rock, you can, you can see. We'll also have several of the government benefits providers, DHS, Social Security, the VA. We'll have offices in the resource center. And we'll have lots of agencies that will just have temporary offices on a part-time basis. For instance, Intervent Crisis Services will have an office on Friday afternoons to distribute formula and diapers. The IRS will have an office on Fridays from January 1st to April 15th to do tax returns for people who would qualify for their earned income tax credit. Next slide, please. In addition to the resource center on the campus, we will have a day shelter with multiple services. The function of a day shelter is really to provide a safe, warm, dry place to be during the day. Oklahoma City hasn't had a day shelter for the homeless since Rest was closed in 97. It's a, is a consequence of not having a day shelter and overnight shelters practice of putting people out during the day. We are perceived to have a larger street population of the homeless than we actually do because they're out during the day. Another consequence of that is that the, as you all know, the Another consequence of that is that, as you all know, the Norick Library has become sort of the de facto day shelter for the homeless downtown, and while to their everlasting credit, they are very welcoming, they don't have the facilities or the expertise to deal with the issues that the homeless population often presents, so having a day shelter will address that. Next slide, please. That's just a floor plan of the day shelter, you can see in the upper left-hand corner, we have locker space, bathrooms, showers, lots of classroom space for AA meetings, that sort of thing, a large commercial kitchen where we'll be offering breakfast and lunch. The breakfast will be provided by City Care, and they will move their current breakfast, which is at First United Methodist Church on Fourth and Robinson, I think, will move to the day shelter. Next slide, please. So, City Care will operate the day shelter, the day shelter will have a separate board from the Homeless Alliance, and United Way is represented on the board, municipal government is represented on the board, the chamber is also represented on the board. You can see at the day shelter, we'll also have other services, some agencies who receive federal grants to provide outreach services to the homeless, and VA, North Care, and Red Rock, they'll all be in the day shelter. Healing Hands and Baptist Medical Dental Fellowship will be providing health care, job training from TEAM, all occurring at the day shelter. Next slide, please. So, we expect that West Town will have certain outcomes, and at the client level, it's pretty basic, we will shorten the length of time individuals and families stay homeless, because we'll have a coordinated approach, we'll be able to focus prevention services where they can be most effective, we'll be able to prevent some homelessness, shorten the length of time that people are homeless, and by making the system through our information technology infrastructure more efficient, more effective, we'll reduce the cost of homelessness, which you all know is running just south of $30 million a year in Oklahoma City. Next slide, please. We also expect some community-level outcomes, and reducing the number of homelessness, number of homeless in our community and the cost. We believe that having a campus for homeless services will pull some of those folks off the streets and engage them in services, and that's going to make downtown developments go more smoothly, it'll make downtown housing more attractive to folks coming for urban infill, and we believe that the collaboration that's inherent at West Town will carry over to other initiatives, where we've got government, faith-based, and not-for-profit agencies working together hand in glove. Next slide. Significant investment in West Town, most of that coming from the Neighborhood Stabilization Program in Phase 1, $2.5 million for the construction of the Resource Center, the Resource Center construction is now 75% complete, it should open for limited services at the end of February, 1st of March, and be wide open by midsummer. $2 million from NSP Phase 2 for the day shelter demolition has begun there, we expect it to open end of May, 1st of June, and then we have a further $300,000 for landscaping and hardscaping on the campus. One of the things we really want to do is make the campus as attractive as possible to keep our clients on the facility during the day and provide transportation back and forth between the overnight shelters and the campus. So, total investment managed by the City of Oklahoma City of $5.1 million for capital. Next slide, please. This initiative has been the closest collaboration that I know of between city and not-for-profit entities, and we've worked very closely for years now with members of the council, the Social Services Committee, especially Meg and Pete and Sam and Pat, and I want to thank them all, and we worked with Ann before Meg, and the city manager's office has just been really extraordinary, and especially the planning department and Russell's leadership in finding sustainable ways to be a better community for our homeless population has been extremely helpful, and his staff managing these federal grants in concert with us, and Matt was here earlier talking about NSP, those grants are extraordinarily complicated, and the planning staff does an amazing job of keeping that all straight, and then homeless services, we work constantly with Jane and Shelley in that part of the planning department. Next slide, please. We have other financial partners, obviously, the Butterfield Foundation has put $600,000 into building a mobile medical dental clinic that will be a collaboration between Healing Hands, our FQHC for the homeless, and Baptist Medical Dental Fellowship, a really interesting collaboration between a wholly government-funded entity and a faith-based organization that will be providing all of our medical and dental services on the campus, and as much foundation here locally is also put in a half million dollars. Next slide, please. You know, homelessness is a difficult issue for any community, and lots of communities have had their nonprofit sector come together to address homelessness. I don't really know of that many where the leadership of municipal government has come together with that sector quite as effectively as we have here, and Oklahoma City has had visionary leadership for a long time, and all you have to do is look at our three MAPS initiatives, and something like West Town doesn't come close to rising to that level, but it really is an example of visionary leadership on the part of the council, and mainly, I wanted to come here today just to say thank you for that. Thank you all very much.
Dan, thanks for all your work on this project, I know it's been many years in the making, and your continued service and attention is appreciated.
Just a quick question, Your Honor.
Yes, Pat?
Dan, last night was probably a severe test on our shelter resources, were we able to address the needs of the homeless?
Largely, yes. We have nine shelters in Oklahoma City, all of them have cold weather contingency plans, and then we have a mechanism for shifting population between the shelters if they go over their cold weather capacity. Last night, no one went over cold weather capacity, City Rescue Mission Salvation Army, both especially took in extras.
I understand your daycare center will have the capability in an emergency of providing some overnight...
That's correct, it's not intended to be an overnight shelter, but in a disaster like a cold weather emergency, or if, God forbid, something happened to one of our overnight shelters, it can be easily converted to overnight stays temporarily.
I want to congratulate you, this is a well-thought-out project, and it really addresses a lot of the homeless needs, and effectively, and at a level, I think, appropriate for our problem here. Thank you for all your work. Thanks.
And if I could just echo that, it's in the two and a half years I've had the pleasure of serving on the council, this has been probably project number one that we've been focused on, and I just, I think 2011 is finally going to be a year that the doors are open and we're able to effectively serve the population, and it wouldn't have happened without Dan, Blair, I see in the audience. It just took lots of partners, but I don't want to diminish the participation of the city, the city has generously helped fund the purchase of that property and continues to be a strong financial partner.
Sam?
Dan, from the very beginning, everyone was concerned about the acceptance and buy-in of the surrounding community, not just how in time would wear them down, but how would bring them in. As you walk through the menu of services, I wonder now if some of the extended services, like IRS, might not be attractive to some of the surrounding community in a way that not only say that's a good thing, but see participation from the community in joint concert with the people we're trying to serve.
You're absolutely right, Sam, and one of the things we've worked, you know, it's an odd neighborhood, and some very low-income residential, and some pretty heavy industrial, so the medical dental clinic is set up so that during the day, it's operated by Healing Hands for the benefit of the clients of the campus, but during the evenings and on weekends, it'll be operated by Baptist Medical Dental Fellowship for the benefit of the medically underserved in the neighborhood. Employment Training and Placement Services will be open to everyone in the neighborhood, the meal service open to everyone in the neighborhood, the tax service, other services, yeah.
Thank you. Pete?
Just a couple of comments, one is, I couldn't be more pleased with the progress we've made in the last year or so, it's been, really been remarkable considering how long it took to get it moving, to make the progress we've made in the last year or so, and I appreciate that. And in that light, I think it'd be appropriate to talk about the impact that United Way had on moving the progress along, and Blair's here today, and I know he's been very much involved in that, and I think United Way's involvement over the last year or so has been really essential to moving this thing forward, and I want to let you know, especially you guys over at United Way, Blair, that how much I personally appreciate that.
Dan, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do also want to highlight a city manager report in there about PetSmart Charities who's initiating a program in Oklahoma City called People Saving Pets, and they have initiated a pilot program in two Oklahoma City areas, and one is in Phoenix and one is in Oklahoma City, and this is in partnership with our own Animal Welfare Division, and then also with the Central Oklahoma Humane Society. And I would venture a guess that a couple of years ago, that we would not have been chosen to launch this initiative, and we've come a long ways with both organizations, and I think, you know, we're not where we need to be, but we've made some good progress, and hopefully with this partnership, we'll be able to leverage that and move even further than we've been able to move in the past. So, I think that's kind of a neat program.
Yeah, they've been very successful, the adoption programs they're putting on, and this is a big investment there, and they're hiring people to help us, that's great for the private sector to come forward, yeah.
It's one thing just to advance the, the program will help us advance the activities, the adoption and sterilization, but in addition to that, funding to help with a part-time volunteer coordinator over the entire operation, it's a big step forward and recognizes the importance of that volunteer component that's being developed, so it's good effort.
Yep. All right, citizens to be heard? All right, ready to adjourn? We're adjourned.